It's 6:30, let's call this meeting to order. And you all remember that this is to the courtesy of Michael Gordon and friends, this is being broadcast to the worldwide web. So whatever you say will be used against you and made fun of on Twitter. I have read the minutes, has anyone else read the minutes? It's time to read the minutes. Yeah, go ahead, I'm reading them.
He can still vote on them.
I'm not sure.
The town ordinance?
No, it's big ass, it'll be back.
It's gone.
This week, it's gone, do we have to wait?
It could go up on the web.
Yeah, it could go up.
You're getting perfectly formatted, well not perfectly formatted.
Just about.
Yeah, there's nothing I really need to change at all, so I can try to remember those.
They gave me a piece, the only thing is the front page is a little bit different because they haven't got the writing under the picture.
Yeah, it's in PDF format, but it's legible, you know, it's just scanned, so people will be able to read it.
My grandchildren answer? It's probably, they stopped and then started again.
So it works in my office.
I think your number never came up. Your number never came up.
That's a post from Mondo.
We would have just taken it.
Yeah. That would have been better.
So then that was two of them.
I have the, something that might have passed. Not all the way done, yep, but what?
Well, it's in progress.
Yes, it is, yep. It's over there.
Oh, well, I think they should have bid on it.
There you go.
Comments on the minutes? You like them?
I like them.
They look good to rock, let's go with that.
Is that a motion?
So this, this is not actually a select was being here at, I hope you're not disappointed. This is a public hearing, which is going to be run by Chris, because this was his idea. And essentially a public hearing means that we're going to try to hear what people got to say about this and see if that guides our next move, if any. There's, there's no restriction on comment, but we're prohibited from making a decision tonight to adopt or take out our bias about what we learned. We meet again in a posted session and either act or not, which is, as Elbridge Cleveland reminds us, is an action itself. Take it away, Doc.
Make copies of this, this thing turned on.
Oh, I'm already there.
Perfect, I'll see two steps ahead. All right.
Yeah, you got it.
Has everybody kind of had a chance to take a look at this? All right, there. All right, the thing you were looking at is referred to as an ordinance establishing a sensible marijuana policy for the town of Alstead, New Hampshire. This was my idea, but we had input from all the selectmen, we had input from the police department, a lot of different people have taken a look at this and offered their two cents. So why are we doing this, or why even talk about doing it? Our town suffers, like lots of other towns across the country, from problems with opiates. This leads to increased crime, we have younger and younger people that are getting sucked down the drain. We've been asked to take steps to address this as selectmen. We've worked to increase our police presence, we've brought in state police to help us patrol, we keep trying to fill positions, and I think we're good there on that. But I think we all have to recognize that in 45 years of the drug war, we have not arrested and prosecuted our way out of it. In 45 years, we have the same levels of usage, same levels of usage today that we had in 1971, it just has not made any difference. We also have done prohibition of alcohol in the past, remember that? Alcohol was a big problem, so we actually amended our constitution to fight it. 13 years later, we amended our constitution again to get rid of that amendment, because it was devastating to our country. Crime went up, all the money that was flowing around to alcohol ended up going into black markets, we created a mafia. Today, some would argue that we have created drug cartels and we have created black markets in this stuff. The saddest fact for me is that we actually have something called a prison industry now. There is a prison industrial complex, states talk about how many new prisons can we build? And the vast majority of people in these prisons are not violent offenders, they are people that are arrested for nonviolent drug use, or not drug use, but possession and things like that. So what do we do in our town about these two things? One, we have this problem with drugs, and two, more, throwing more cops at it after 45 years doesn't seem to solve anything. We passed an ordinance on paraphernalia last year, I don't know if anybody remembers that, but we made it a $100 fine if you're caught with drug paraphernalia by our police. What that means is, is that the town issues a civil offense, a civil offense, a civil citation, which means it gets paid here at the town offices or to the police department, they get charged $100, and off they go. The fine for either possession of less than an ounce of marijuana, or having marijuana paraphernalia, drug paraphernalia, is one year in jail and a $2,000 fine, which is pretty steep. I'm not suggesting we should beat Colorado or Washington State, but that's a pretty steep fine. And that is also, can be pretty devastating for a kid that's 18 years old, especially when some job applications say, have you ever been charged with a crime that was punishable by one year in jail or more? That means they got to answer yesterday. Problem now is, is okay, we've given you a $100 ticket for your marijuana pipe, but what if there's marijuana in it, or what do you have marijuana on you? Our police have no, they have two choices, they always have a choice, they can use their discretion and let it go, or they can charge them under New Hampshire law, which calls for the year in jail, $2,000 in fines. If we had people come in and talk to us, and if you talk to people who deal with addiction, you know, we ask them, what do we do? And the, the same thing keeps coming up, is we have to do a better job of educating and describing what the long-term effects are of getting involved in these drugs. And we've not done a good job of that. It would be great if we could put a warrant article on our warrant that said, we would propose $20,000 for, you know, drug education in the schools, but that's not our purview, that's the school board's purview. So what can we do? The idea around this, if you've not read it all the way through, is that we start collecting fines for possession of marijuana at $100, just like it is for marijuana paraphernalia, and we take that money and we funnel it to fund drug education programs in our grade school, in our middle school, in our high school, if we have the funds available. If anybody gets caught with marijuana and they're under the age of 18, then we will require that they go to a drug awareness program that will be funded by this. I'm not sure if it's funded by that, or if they have to pay that. We'll get into it. Yeah, I believe they do pay that. Had a cost of $150. Between the money we take in from adults and their contribution, we can perhaps get some kids into a program that might make a difference. That's the goal. So if you'd like to walk through this with me, we can kind of talk about each section. I don't know if you guys want to do that, or you want me to read the thing verbatim, and you guys pop up with any questions, I can go sort of a clause at a time.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are we the only town doing this?
Well, it's interesting. I'm not aware of another town that's doing this specifically, but towns all across the state have implemented paraphernalia laws. Paraphernalia ordinances, excuse me. On that part of it, that's, I don't want to say universal, but all the way from the seacoast to way up north, down to Chesterfield, I was down there last week, and they have one too, that all read very similarly to ours.
What about, my question to you is, I have never heard of anybody being able to have put this into the police department, they aren't allowed to have monies in a town, and how have you checked into the legality with DRA, on how the money was where, the money would actually be?
What I think we addressed, what we tried to address, was that money would flow into, I'll tell you what, let's go through the section by section when we get to that point.
It's at the very end.
Let's bring that up, and if that can go into a town fund, that's fine too.
Well, that's what I mean, I'd have to find out, I think it would be better a town fund than just hanging around something.
Right, down in the bottom drawer of the police department. I agree completely. That's what, what we did, what we did try to do was, and there was a lot when we started out with this, because we worked with Marcello closely on it, was the idea was, you know, the police, they're involved in these programs and they work with schools, they should run it, we've kind of come around on that, but we'll get some feedback here too.
So my next question is, this is strictly for organic marijuana, as in non-synthetic?
Correct. I don't think we mentioned synthetics at all in here.
But it would include like, I don't know, and stuff like that.
Right. But not, yeah, not this into the.
K2 and the.
We'll, we'll get into that. So let me go through, and I'm just going to go through sections, and these should be small enough bites, so we can have a little discussion afterward. Be it enacted by the Board of Selectmen in the town of Alstead, New Hampshire on this day, section one, sections one through four, this act shall be known as an ordinance establishing a sensible marijuana policy for the town of Alstead, New Hampshire. Section two, go ahead.
This would be a marijuana possession policy, yes? And this is not in one's private home, or just a private home?
We're, well, right now, it's illegal in your home. It's illegal on the street, it's illegal in your car. Yeah, so it really would apply kind of everywhere.
So what if you're growing it?
We do not, well, we specifically discuss things other than possession, we'll get to that part. That will come. Section two, notwithstanding any law to the contrary, possession of one ounce or less of marijuana shall only be a civil offense, subjecting an offender who is 21 years of age or older to a civil penalty of $100 and forfeiture of the marijuana, but not to any other form of criminal or civil punishment or disqualification. Unpaid fines shall double if not paid within 90 days of the offense. An offender under the age of 21, I'm going to pause there and say 21, this was at Marcello's request, we had originally started out with 18. Right, but wanting to keep it consistent with the age of drinking, things like that.
Does he stretch for the 90 days, the police department or the third?
There is going to have to be some policies and some procedures set up for this, after, if we decide to enact it, then we're going to have to get together with the police, the town clerk, the selection office, to figure out the mechanics of how we make this all go. I don't think it will be that complicated. An offender under the age of 21 shall be subject to the same forfeiture of the marijuana, but a civil penalty and fine shall be imposed only if he or she fails to complete a drug awareness program, repeats the criteria set forth in section three, we'll get to that. The parent or legal guardian of any offender under the age of 21 shall be notified of the offense and of available drug awareness programs in accordance to section 4C. Section 4C and the section three are going to talk about what these programs are and how they operate. If an offender under the age of 21 fails within one year of such notice of the offense and available programs to complete a drug awareness program, a civil penalty of up to $350 may be imposed pursuant to section 4C. This is the stick. You want to get that done, you want to get it taken care of, we want our people to be educated. B, except as specifically provided in sections two through four, neither the town nor any of its political subdivisions or the respective agencies, authorities, or instrumentalities may impose any form of penalties, sanction, restriction, or disqualification on a person for possessing one ounce or less of marijuana or paraphernalia for marijuana use, nor may any penalties or obligations exceed those outlined in subsection A. B, imposed by the town, or nor any of its political subdivision or the respective agencies, authorities, or instrumentalities solely for having cannabinoids or cannabinoid metabolites in the urine, blood, sweat, hair, fingernails, toenails, and other tissues or fluid of the human body. I tried to cover everything. No, that's not true, I use model legislation, that's where a lot of this came from. By way of illustration, rather than limitation, neither possession of one ounce or less of marijuana, nor possession of paraphernalia for marijuana use, nor the presence of cannabinoids, this is, no, it's repetitive, but it is saying the same thing again, urine, blood, sweat, hair, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, may provide a basis to deny a person, person student financially, a public housing, or any form of public financial assistance, including unemployment benefits, to deny a person the right to operate a motor vehicle, or disqualify a person from serving as a foster parent or adopted parent. However, nothing contained herein shall be construed to repeal or modify existing laws, ordinances, or bylaws, regulations, personal practices, or policies concerning the operation of motor vehicles, or other actions taken while under the influence of marijuana. Information concerning the offense of possession of one ounce or less of marijuana shall not be recorded in any database of criminal offenders. Go ahead.
Most of that stuff, it seems, is not even done on the town level, so the town, the town can't really restrict the county or the state from censoring people for these things, correct?
Not in Alstead, or anywhere.
Right. What I'm saying is, if somebody's getting assistance from the state and they violate this, now that not tell the state that they can't use this against the person.
Do we ever get inquiries from the state, do you have anything on this guy?
I have never.
Okay. So perhaps a lot of that could be struck. And would you be interested in?
Well, yeah, I mean, first of all, it's probably the second half of that paragraph is fairly repetitive, and it's not really going to, is there anything in there that the town actually does? Well, we don't do unemployment benefits.
We do welfare, and we have.
We have public housing.
We have public housing, and we have done.
Administered by the town.
Financed in part by the town. So my next question.
I guess maybe some of that.
So my next question to this, Chris, is, since we don't have town police coverage 24/7, are you going to come into an inequitable situation when state police rolls in and prosecutes somebody for the same thing that a town police officer wouldn't?
That's absolutely correct.
Because if a county, county or state comes in, this isn't worth paper, it's written on.
Right, but I, I have no way of influencing them, and I think that's something we recognized, that if feds came in.
I understand, but, I understand, I understand, the purpose of this is to give us a tool to guide the people we already know, who are already our neighbors, who are already on the margins of some kind of trouble, and give them one or two shots outside of the criminal justice system that's administered 100% locally.
I agree with them.
You know what? You're 17, let's try this.
I agree with it 100%, I just wish it was ways.
This is not, this is not an attempt to change state law or modify the behavior of the state police, so you really should pick your spots for your marijuana use, you should make sure our police are on duty.
Maybe it was opposed by Congress.
Well, they're 18 anyway.
Well, hopefully it becomes irrelevant, we do get something done at the state level.
And I don't think that's an irrational hope. The state of Vermont introduced this legislation at the state level this week.
And it was approved through the House? Not Hampshire, yeah.
It was in the Hampshire House, but we'll probably won't get to the Senate.
Can we enact this at the town, you're saying this can supersede, if one of our town cops stops somebody, or do they have a choice of going to that?
They have a choice.
They, they will always have a choice, because we as selectmen cannot compel what the chief of police does. That's, that's in our SA, we cannot make it. But I can say that we have the support of the chief of police, you know?
What about the future chief of police?
I hate to say that we did, we would never impose something so bold as a fitness test, but I think we would all be interested in hiring people that would support our values. The question is, is does this support the town's values, and that's why you're all here today, listening to me throw an order. But I think you bring up a good point, Joe, I mean, that is the intent, the intent is to give our, our police other tools other than.
So the choice that they have downstairs now is, we're going to charge this guy with a life-changing felony, but we don't do anything.
Right.
And what we're trying to create is a, is a middle ground that pushes people towards treatment, because the only thing that we've learned, you were here when that guy from the county came, the only thing that we've learned is that sometimes treatment is effective. The thing that we know without a doubt is that incarceration is not effective, if the goal is to reduce drug abuse. Confiscating their cars and their boats doesn't seem to do it, locking them up for 100 years, under the Clinton administration didn't seem to help, although it did create an industry that certainly was a lot of people.
Absolutely. So just information, is less possession of less than an ounce considered a felony in New Hampshire?
It's a misdemeanor, but it's a.
It's what?
A misdemeanor. It is up to.
But it carries that year in jail tag, which is the threshold.
I believe it's a class A misdemeanor.
Yeah, it's class A.
So no student loan, no federal job, you probably can't even get into the army unless they're really desperate enough.
No, they aren't, they don't let you anymore, let you have a high school.
High school diploma, no, no.
And this is an anomaly in the Northeast, I mean, every other state is, I mean, New Hampshire is draconian by comparison.
So this is good, police department discretion?
More discretion than they have.
Add another option, another tool, something other than you're scot, off scot free and we've made no impact, or here's the big club of the state.
I don't know if this only deals with marijuana.
Right, yeah, go ahead.
Is this just for Alstead residents, or are we going to have, I mean, if we're just, if we're doing this, is this going to draw people in here?
It's difficult, I, I can imagine a scenario where people would be motivated to come here to smoke marijuana because of this. But if they're here, and they're under our jurisdiction, no matter where they live.
They would still have to be.
And the police would still have the choice.
Yeah.
To go, the state legislative group or the local ordinance.
Yeah, if that became a problem, you know, if we just start hitting them with the state law, you know?
And I think that that's pretty well articulated by Marcello. His take speak for him, because he's not here, but I think the broader discussion, and this started last year when we started talking about paraphernalia, was they didn't really like being the position of all or nothing. And what we, since we don't make any money on these things, what we're really trying to do is modify behavior in a positive way, and this seems like a fairly gentle first time step, to say, look, buckwheat, you're going to take the course, or you're going to pay a much bigger fine, and the next time you cross paths, we're sending you right into the criminal justice system and doing the.
So this is a, I know New York did this, with guns, I think, at one point or something. You had your one shot, so this is the one shot, and the next step is.
If it were passed. Yeah. If, that would definitely be, I think, be implied threat. But again, we, we can't compel our chief of police one way or another, but we can offer him more tools, more alternatives, something that may fit a particular situation other than A, nothing, or B.
Well, you run, I mean, you know, I support the place 100%, but they run them, they do it differently for different folks, because they know past history of certain people.
Absolutely.
And now it happens, that individual versus somebody, it's a really first time, the unfair treatment kind of stuff.
But they have that today. Right now, they can charge or they can not charge.
Really?
Absolutely.
I thought they had, I thought they had the charge.
Only in the child abuse bin.
Now, how does this compare with the towns around us? Do they give the 90 days to pay the offense, do they give a year to take a drug awareness program?
So here's where we're innovating a lot, and the towns around us that have done this for paraphernalia, all they've done is define, they've said, here's the fine, and that's it. We went off the reservation, because our goal, besides giving our police an alternative here, is we, we do want to fund drug awareness programs, and we want to increase the amount of money that can, can be spent in our schools on those that are in early age. So that's when you see this stuff, I don't know what their policies are on collection of town ordinances, whether it's, you know, a noise violation, or whether it's for, for drug paraphernalia, I don't know for sure. So we're in some areas, we're, we're in a little bit of uncharted territory, but I think, and this got worked out with, you know, like I said, with various points of view, I, I think it strikes a pretty good balance, but I'm certainly open to any suggestions as we move through it.
How many drug awareness programs are built in Russian County? Do you know that? I mean.
The way it works right now, you got to be incarcerated. Well, at least for every Dooey drugs, that fellow we have from the county, you know, the only avenue to publicly funded therapeutic environment is incarceration. Not even being charged, you got to go, that's where the program is.
So where would we find these drug awareness programs?
So Marcello talked a little bit about working with the city of Keene, because Keene has done some stuff in their schools, and if we can get ahold of some of their, not that I'm thrilled to adopt everything that Keene does, I'm sorry, I'm still sour from paying too many fees to open a business. But there's some programs that are in existence down there. Marcello is a school resource officer down in Hensdale too, and I think he said that they have some stuff, and we've talked to, you know, talked to other police officers and things like that. I think programs are out there, what we have to do is come up with, you know, a few options that may work the best.
And my discussion with, I'm going to draw a blank on his name, the guy who runs the state police barracks in Keene, DeLuise, last year we met about a couple of things, this was one of them, and he says that his organization has a great interest in launching Dare 3.0.
We don't dare.
But they can't find anybody to pay for it, they can't find, the legislature will not pay for it this, this particular year. They can't find, the legislature will not pay for it at this, at this particular year. So there's some expertise, there's some professional training, there's some certification that we might be able to purchase in the same way that we were able to purchase state police coverage for what I thought was a very reasonable rate. Because it's in everybody's interest, I think, the breadth of the community's interest to make this work.
I might be jumping ahead, but I had, I wanted to say about that. I, I would hope that we'd have more medical professionals working on that side of it. I find that, obviously, the police have to be involved with the criminal and the stopping citations and all that, but when we get to the programs and the schools, I'd like to see that focus more on the, you know, addiction issue, medical issue, you know, as opposed to strictly punishment and...
The National Institute of Health didn't write a curriculum that we all pay for. Now, implementing it means something completely different, but I think the resources are out there, we just have to do our homework and fight them.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I agree that addiction is a medical issue, it's not a criminal issue. But I'm trying to imagine, you know, the, the first...
Well, it's kind of a nuanced thing. I mean, if you try to separate the drug use and addiction from the crime, where, you know, simply the act of using a drug, I don't think is criminal in my mind. You do a drug and you go beat your wife or stab somebody, that's a crime, you know?
Right, so... I'm trying to imagine though, like, okay, let's say it's a seventeen-year-old kid who's cruising through town, smoking a joint at two o'clock in the morning, and Roger pulls him over, and he's, they're just partying, they're just doing what they're doing. Is that, does that kid benefit from some education, or it doesn't seem to me like he would probably be placed in an addiction program? You know what I mean? This is where, these are the things that I think we have to try to flesh out, and I'm not sure if it can be fleshed out in ordinance, or whether it gets fleshed out through practice.
Especially if you have someone that's traveling through town, from another town, how do you enforce the school, you know, the education?
Our state, you know?
Yeah.
Exactly.
We have the same issue today with, you know, our open container ordinance or our...